Have to explain it to me, I have to look it up or something.
Also go.
What that time is.
This is called the bird trail.
Hundred.
And this part's actually paved.
Right. It is five thirty and we'll call the April second meeting to order. So Chris, we want to get a roll call.
Absolutely. Mr. Gerard.
Yeah. Here.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
And Ms. Gore. Steven, I promise I didn't do that to you on purpose.
Didn't think so.
Are there any changes to the minutes commissioners? Okay, then the minutes will stand as they're recorded. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
We do have one. We'd like to move the lemonade stand violation to the end of the meeting.
I was going, I was made aware of the fact that there was this alternate alternate agenda and I was going to take a motion for many of the commissioners to table this until April the first of two thousand and twenty five. Anybody wants to make it?
I suggest at dinner, we missed the opportunity. I say, we all should have written in separately and said we were going to be absent today.
Here.
Clever Alan.
I had jet lag. I didn't think of it.
Okay, so nobody's going to take me up on that one, so we'll move on. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. Do we have any public comment? Apparently no. We, do we have anybody online? Okay, then we'll move on. First up on the cassette calendar is the Frankie residence. No call ups? Okay, moving on. The Beaver Run tent. And I'm assuming this is the same one we do every year.
That's correct, yep.
So. No call ups on that either.
Ask a question without calling it up.
Sure.
Yeah.
How many more years will we see this?
It'll be, it'll be annual as it's written now.
Is that, I mean, is that the plan?
You know, I think so. I think when we, I'm not sure why we decided to have it reviewed annually. But you know, it's I don't have a really good answer for that. I think we were trying to like, you can see like if you read that code section, we were trying to like make something that worked for the larger resorts that have a summer wedding time where we had like some stipulations about, you know, property size and everything else, but I think maybe at the time we were worried that maybe it was something we wouldn't want in the future, so that way we could adjust it and get rid of it, but, but then as it's moved along, it just seems like it's just something they submit every year where they basically felt the application and we use the same materials from year to year and change the date in the staff report and change the date in the conditions and and move forward. But yeah, there isn't, I, I don't have a great answer of why we review this annually because it is kind of more of the same.
That's what word processing is for.
Yeah.
Change the date and on you move.
I think, I think it's just to make, I think it's just to make sure that they abide by the hundred and so forty-five day timeframe that there is like a hard stop versus this kind of continuing on into the ski season or something.
I do have one question and I'd never noticed this before, but in the findings and conditions, one of the conditions is getting a permit from the red, white and blue. Does that have something to do with occupancy or how many people they can get in there?
For any temporary structure that's greater than two hundred square feet, that's a requirement. If it's going to have people inside. Yeah, and that's statewide. I think, I don't think that's necessarily our own building. That's a building code.
I believe it has to do with the wind load as well as just egress possibilities where they actually make sure that it can withstand like the winds that we have in this region.
Okay. All right, move on to other matters. Town council summer.
Okay, great.
This will go down in history as a show.
So council met last Tuesday and Cliff was able to present all the code amendments to defensible space that you guys saw several months ago and that's moving forward. Cliff, I, maybe you just want to highlight any revisions we've made just so the council commission's up to date.
Hello. Yes, so we had our first reading last week. The main intent of this is basically to align our code with the rest of the counties. Some of our community partners specifically red, white and blue. Some changes since you last saw it. We have changed quite a bit of the language and really focused on that zero to five feet. That has been a constant in all our communications from resources from the state as well as the meetings I've had with red, white and blue, even wildfire council. One of the big things that none of you are able to review that has come from town council is the implementation of a non combustible layer at the zero to five feet in the areas outside of the downtown core. So thinking of the Highlands properties, a lot of these Highlands properties already utilize a non combustible layer, kind of a rock drip line, so you don't get mud on the side of your siding. This will work basically as a non combustible layer to ensure embers don't catch fire at the edge of your property. Relating to our conservation district, we're really worried because of the, you know, very tight setbacks and very dense development. We have allowed it zero to three feet. That would be the minimum setback allowed per the code. So it's something that staff still has flexibility to review when we are looking at, you know, D major and above or new construction. So we still have flexibility, but those are probably the, the bigger identifiers that are really going to change how we, you know, implement defensible space in that zero to five feet. That was a lot.
So does that mean in the district going forward, the three feet around the perimeter of a house will be non flammable material landscape?
I guess I should have clarified that is going into the voluntary section of our code, so policy forty-eight. It's something that we may mention to property owners of, hey, you're able to take advantage of this full zero to three feet because you've got a ten foot setback. Let's go ahead and put a non combustible layer. For other properties that don't have that, we'll work with them as well as red, white and blue to come up with a good solution. Coming down the pipeline and the farther future, there's some other stuff coming at the state and, you know, more hyper local with Captain McDonald that Summit Fire EMS. So in the future, we may have a little bit more around like structure hardening with the use of materials.
Still Cliff, but if it was a new construction, they would need to do that, correct?
No.
No, that's not included in.
Nope. Any new construction, specifically, you know, Highlands, other large development lots, they would be able to remove all of the trees and landscaping in that zero to five feet. Because they've got, you know, sixty feet to the edge of the property line, so they can kind of put that defensible space right at the edge of their structure and then rely on the privacy and buffer coming from further out on their property.
And on new construction, that three feet of stone perimeter around the houses is mandatory, is it not?
No, it's a, it's a voluntary thing. So it's definitely something that we can work with the property owners or the design contractors to implement that when it is, you know, eligible for it. Like Mike probably was going towards some of the areas in the downtown core. We wouldn't allow them to put three feet of non combustible layer because then they would have no landscaping. So we definitely are looking for a balance, but you know, there's not an answer for all the lots.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks Cliff. There's a BGV development agreement first reading. I think we've updated you guys pretty extensively on that over the last, what are we up to thirteen work sessions now, Chris?
Thirteen between last July and through March. You know, we're going to second reading next Tuesday with no changes to the development agreements. We anticipate that will just be approved as presented. I think you can expect to see some of the modifications associated with the master plans as well as some of the first subdivisions here pretty quickly. This from talks with applicants, they anticipate to submit four different applications on April fifteenth. So it'll be for carving off kind of the bigger tracks that will have the single family lots up at Peak Eight as well as a master plan modification for both the Peak Seven Eight master plan as well as the Gondola Lots master plan to get those densities right and the other provisions in there. So we will have you know, some decent sized projects in the near, near future for you guys to, to review. So we won't have, we only continue with the theme of lighter agendas, I think, into the summer.
Okay, so on the East Peak Eight Hotel, we reviewed one, I think in two thousand and nineteen. Any sense on how similar the new one might be to the one that was previously reviewed?
I mean, the conceptual drawings showing the architectural style as well as the programming and even the square footage is pretty similar to what they, what was previously approved. I will say that is probably one of the last things that will go to a site specific review. You know, there's an outline within the development agreement that has, says that the required order of events and I guess I can, I can share that with you. The, the first order of event is getting the roundabout and pedestrian improvements at the intersection of French and Park Avenue. And then followed by the employee housing, which is eight six bedroom dorm style units on the North Gold Rush Lot. And roughly about twenty-five thousand square feet, so not a huge amount of programming on that site. And then there are a total of sixteen duplex units anticipated, very much like the ones that you saw in the previous application on the South Gold Rush Lot, but the, the roundabout has to be completed before the employee housing. Employee housing has to be completed before the duplex units. And then also there's a provision for the single family lots up kind of in the Timber Trail area, for lack of a better description. We're allowing the applicant to sell half of the sixteen lots before the employee housing is completed on, on on the North Gold Rush Lot to allow them to, I guess, acquire some capital to fund some of these other improvements that they do with the, the roundabout and the employee housing. So that's, that's kind of the, the first wave. I think they anticipate parcel four, really, I think probably four or five years into, or would be about the earliest they would consider starting that building. And then that would also require the employee housing on the Entrada site at the corner, kind of Red Four Fifty and Highway Nine to be completed before Building Four is, is completed. So you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of, a lot of moving pieces with that big building really being kind of at the end of the line of, of the phasing for this development agreement.
So Mike, you'll turn it out, but.
Okay. When you say they're going to be allowed to sell fifty percent of the sixteen lots, that includes the two that are behind the administration building and when you say they sell them, once they're sold, the owners would be allowed then to submit their plans for development of those lots?
That's correct. Yeah, and you know, I guess there's always the possibility the developer could develop those, but I mean, the, the way it's termed is the sale of those lots. So it doesn't specify whether it's raw land or with any of other improvements on it. So I guess yet to be determined.
User developer, whomever buys it.
Correct, yep.
And then develop it.
Correct.
And are there any improvements to Sawmill Road that accesses that?
The, the road. Well, Sawmill Road is not, is not the access. It's actually Four O'Clock Run Road for the two. It's within that subdivision, but that dirt road and, and essentially the access that's contemplated for the two sites off of that dirt road is a private driveway, a shared private driveway that would, it would look like a continuation of that road, but would meet, you know, engineering and red, white and blue standards at the, at the end of that dirt, dirt road.
Question was, is, is there going to be any improvements to the road? I know that's Summit County, but.
Yeah, there, there are no improvements required or contemplated to that, that road as it is in, in Summit County. And then Timber Trail would, if you're familiar with Timber Trail Drive, would be a continuation of, of that road to the south towards admin and with a little bit of bends in there to accommodate grades to get to the home sites.
Chris, following up on Mike's question about the hotel, in these work session sessions, I realize a long ways away. Are they giving any indication of what they think that hotel might be or be like?
Yeah, I mean, they gave us actually a pretty good detailed drawing this summer when we reviewed it and actually someone raised that question just from the public wanted to know more about it. And so I believe there's fifty-eight timeshare units with a total of a hundred and forty-seven keys because there's different lockoff configurations. I think thirty-eight hotel rooms and I believe twenty whole ownership condominiums in that building as it, as it was presented. And again, that, that's their conceptual, but they really, the council kind of pushed them to like, say, what is this building going to look like? They have other hard constraints in terms of the height. You know, honoring the, be no taller than the East Cross Gable of One Ski Hole Place, which is consistent with the current master plan and the previous design. The footprint of the building has shrunk really on the edges a little bit where there is a little bit less square footage. So they are bringing it in from the four, four o'clock subdivision, maybe fifteen feet or so, and then I think it's maybe twenty-five or thirty feet from One Ski Hole Place to provide a little bit more width. And then probably one of the bigger items that they showed that is a change is previously there was an access easement for trucks to back in to the loading dock through One Ski Hole Place. They have eliminated that design and requested a second curb cut on Four O'Clock Road to back in to the building and not go through One Ski Hole Place. And I think some of those changes were probably from talking with the, the board of One Ski Hole Place of you know, what are some things we could do to, I guess, make them, make them happier? I don't know that everything will make them, but those are, you know, some of the changes that, that have been made kind of the, in, in that regard.
One of the things that I think is curious and I'm interested in is whether there'll be some kind of split management with the timeshares and the hotel rooms. Are they going to get a branded hotel operation? Or is BGV going to run it all as a timeshare slash hotel? Yeah, I don't know. Is, are they talking about that?
They, they haven't really alluded to like what that, that will be, you know, I would anticipate for a timeshare, it will be a BGV product, but I don't know. From the previous developer where it's whole ownership and hotel, I know they were talking to different, as they call flags, different hotel brands and trying to get you know, whatever the, the company and their, their tier for this type project and negotiate that. It never, it never ended up settling on I guess, the, the actual flag. So I don't know if that's a possibility of BGV for the other components or if it will be, you know, something new that BGV and operate a hotel as well as timeshare and do whole ownership. I do know that, that they are, I believe they're doing some whole ownership over in Avon right now that their first phase is completed. So that's something kind of new in their company portfolio developing and, and selling that.
So Chris, you mentioned the access for One Ski Hole Place. So is that going to come off of Four O'Clock Road and go behind the building to access One Ski Hole?
Now, after the, the completion of CO, they'll have to eliminate the access from from the, the county road. Forget the name.
Temporary during construction?
Yeah, just during construction, they'll have, you know, multiple access points, but then once it's, yeah, Sawmill Run Road. And then after CO, they'll have two accesses, one for guests and basically all non deliveries a little bit further east on Ski Hole Road and then one a little further west for all deliveries. Is, is what their, their conceptual plans that they showed to the, the council.
And Chris, do they have the same architect that the previous developer did?
They do not. They're working with DTJ out of, of the Boulder, Bill Campy, which we have a lot of experience working with him. The design overall looks very similar, so I'm not sure, you know, the arrangement if they, you know, you probably know how that works. If there's a design for a site, it's very similar and they like it and they have a new architect. But Bill Campy has been working with them on all the sites for both the, the site program as well as the architectural renderings and some of the even floor plans that they've presented to the council.
Okay. And then similar question for the workforce housing across from seven eleven. Is that still same architect or same design?
Yeah, so that, yeah, before, previously it was Baker Hogan or BHH and now it's, it's Bill Campy and both of the employee housing sites are anticipated to be a modular construction. And so they did ask for some, you know, specific provisions within the development code. You know, they want to have, you know, cement, cementitious siding applied at the factory with some limited wood trim, which we do allow by code without points. So they did want that written into the development agreement. And then they also, I think, anticipate some unbroken ridge lines that will be greater than fifty feet, but I think it's more in the neighborhood of what, like a little over sixty. It's not much.
I'm going to get into that in a minute here when we talk about Entradas.
Yeah, Mark's been handling the, because with Entrada not being in the town, we have a separate annexation development agreement for that and Mark has been handling all the provisions specifically related to that.
Thank you, Chris. Just for your information, I'm very concerned about what the appearance of those are going to be because I drove over and looked at what they're doing in Avon and I hope that's not what they're going to do here. The execution of the structural part of that was much better than what we had done here at Justice Center. But the appearance of the finished product is not something I would expect to see in Broken Ridge.
Well, you guys will certainly get an opportunity to look at it.
Good. You know where the.
Any other questions on BGV?
Yeah, it's probably, I mean, I think we can, we can give you like, since it's not an active application, we can give you this information. It's public record and development agreement. But it probably to that point, I, I will warn, you may not want to make any prejudgmental statements against the project or before that is that potentially, you know, that's probably important. I think you can ask clarification questions. Really, any, anything, anything that's in public record, but I think making any kind of judgmental statements is probably our.
I was walking that line.
Yeah.
Statement was about the product in Avon, just to be clear.
As far as Entrada, I did want to just take you through that because we haven't talked about that one as much. And thanks, Chris. I just want to recognize Chris for amazing level of work. Insane amount of work to, and, and Chris just understands every piece of it and so anyway, we're really fortunate to have him shepherding that through for us. So as far as Entrada goes, I just wanted you to understand a few things. This is probably not likely to come in very soon is my guess, just because it's tied to the old East Peak Eight Hotel site. And as Chris said, that's going to be probably one of the last things we'll see developed up there. And so Entrada needs to be completed in order to provide the workforce housing mitigation associated with that hotel site. And so probably won't see something right away, but maybe we'll be surprised. And it'll come in sooner than we think. But anyway, they're talking tentatively right now about forty-one bedroom units approximately on that site. It's a little tight. And as you guys remember, it came to you a couple of years ago for a kind of a fit test review and anyway, so some of these things will, you may remember some of the exceptions, but I'm just going to go through some of the development code waivers associated with that. But they did come up with a restrictive covenant that Lori agreed to and it's tied to one hundred percent AMI rental rates. And in that rate, there's a whole bunch of little escalator collages associated with it, but we're comfortable as town staff and housing in particular that it's, we're in a good place with that. In terms of the development itself, the permit, we, we're gonna, the council has decided to, at least at the first reading and we're assuming there's really no changes going to next week, just like the BGV agreement. So council's pretty comfortable with these now, although they were asking many questions earlier. There'd be a waiver from the density provisions. It's going to be about forty percent over density. And so that would accrue like forty negative points under our code.
That's Entrada.
That's Entrada. And so that tight site, one of the things that happened here between the time in the last couple of years is we had the elimination of the mass bonus, you know, for common areas, hallway, stuff like that. And so the same building, they're not building anything bigger, but that same building footprint is going to use up a lot more density. So they need to make a request on that and the council decided to make that a waiver. They also just made an acknowledgement on that the solar panels on the roof were in accordance with our code, which I, you know, staff was feeling comfortable with that. Then as Chris said, the use of the the use of the non natural materials, that being the fiber cement, which is allowed in our code as long as you've got some wood trim to go with it or stone wainscot. So that's, that's in here as well. They are going to be going over building height. So there's going to be a waiver of fifteen points for that. Now it's, it's going to be essentially two stories at by County Road Four Fifty, French Creek Road there, but it will raise up to two and a half to three stories on the north end. And so it's not going to alter.
It's similar to what we saw in the BGV drive, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's similar to what you saw before.
Because it was a.
Yeah, because, just because of the grade of the site. So they'll be kind of like this garden level daylighting. And so the council made an exception for that. And as well as Chris mentioned, they waived a point for the ridge line length. It's going to be a little over fifty feet. Although they are going to break up the ridge line some even with this modular construction that they're talking about. Couple of minor things about, they, they waived one parking space for the manager's office. There should be two. And then there's a bunch, some, a few waivers from engineering for, we don't typically allow two access points. They're already there. The one thing I will say is we are requiring that the main, that the entrance, put it this way, County Road Four Fifty, there, there's going to be an access there. It already is there, but it's only for Marty Getz to get his people into his mini storage. It's to the east. And then as an emergency access to Entrada. Everyone that's living there, anyone coming is going to have to come in right. Everyone that's living there, anyone coming is going to have to come in, right in, right out off of Highway Nine. And that, you know, that's the best solution we could come up with. What we didn't want to do was try to have people trying to get in on Four Fifty when you already got a queuing problem there at the light. It would have been a disaster, so we've avoided that and but but that access will be there just for emergency purposes and.
So that access would have a gate with a keypad or some.
Yeah, there'd be a gate, yeah, for the, exactly, or a bollard or something that something that they could, you know. Remove if they had to. And then there's a. Let me see here. Uh, the open space requirement, we typically require thirty percent of the site to be open space or you get negative points. Twenty percent is what the council agreed to on it because of the tightness of the site. And interestingly, our code right now requires employee housing, you know, employee housing mitigation requirements. It requires it for deed restricted units even, because there's a theory that, you know, well, it's true. It creates, it creates jobs when you're building it, but I think in the future, we're going to be changing that because that's. It it's counter to, you know, trying to provide incentives for workforce housing, right? So those are most of the big ones, I may have missed one, but anyway. Yeah, so whenever that does come in, we'll be reminding you of those because they're in the development agreement. Assuming they pass it on second reading next week, which I, we absolutely anticipate that they will, so. That's Entrada, any questions on that?
Did they include any language about net zero, all electric, anything about that?
No, good question, Steve.
So they could still conceivably get site-specific bonus points for doing something like that?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, just getting a little, Mike and I got a little preview of where the building code is going. So with some of the phasing, they didn't ask for any provisions related to standards locking them in to place now. And from the meeting with our our chief building official, really particularly when we get to some of the larger buildings. That code probably will ramp up. You know, we started talking about the IBC twenty twenty-four code, it's it's to get tougher and. I, you know, I think it's still like, it's one of those things where I think where the Rick alluded to the fact that we'll have to. See if we can live with everything, you know, there'll be a period of like trying to work with the builders and everything. But just from my understanding of, you know, what he's relayed to us, there it is. Every every new adoption of the building code gets stricter and stricter and that will eliminate the. The sustainable building code that we've kind of just had specific to our county here.
I think it's going to be a big movement towards net zero from what I've heard. And we would, we'll typically adopt that code about a year after it is released, which will be released sometime later this year. So I guess by the end of next year, we'll have adopted the twenty twenty-four, because we adopt every other cycle.
Yeah, Rick said that he thought it would eliminate the need for the special. Oh, Summit County Sustainability Code, because the twenty twenty-four International Energy Code would be over and above that. So in some ways, it'll do a nice job sort of consolidating all the energy code requirements. And Rick seemed to think it was very positive.
We also did our first reading on the Entrada zoning ordinance. So you have to, as part of, when you do an annexation, you have to place that property within officially within a zone district. And so in this case, we put it in Land Use District Five. You guys actually, back a year and a half ago, made a recommendation to place it in there. And which is required as part of the whole process. So anyway, that went to first reading, it will actually come back in two meetings because of notification requirements for a second reading. But that's just moving forward. They approved an IGA with Summit County Housing Authority. For, it's going to allow the town to loan one of our employees. To the housing authority to serve as their executive director. And unfortunately for us, Corey Burr will be going over, some of you know Corey. She's done an amazing job for our housing division for the last six years. And so anyway, she will be going over to the housing authority. It's a one-year loan, but it's anticipated it will go longer than that, you know, that it'll just be, she'll just keep there. But at this point, that's the way it's structured, but anyway, we'll miss her and now we're going to have to. Do some recruiting and working on reorganization of that division. Lori Best is planning to retire next year. So and she's been at the helm for twenty-plus years. Really going solo for the first ten of those, ten or twelve of them, until we actually brought other staff on. But right now, we've got a housing division with six staff people in it, so. Anyway, that was approved. And then just the last thing I'll mention is that we did hold the town project hearing on the Tiger Dredge Food and Beverage Delivery. System that you guys looked at a couple of weeks ago and that was approved. Did have a few folks showing up and commenting. It was mainly on the operational aspects, it really didn't have anything to do with the application itself or the sighting or anything like that. But it was really business owners questioning, how is this going to work? And they're they're nervous about it and so our staff is working with them to connect them with One O Six West. To, because a lot of the questions they were asking, we we had answers to, or One O Six West does. So anyway, but that was approved and that was the meeting.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, and with that, it is six oh seven and I'll adjourn the meeting.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
That's for the Entrada, I expect a lot of people will be.